Good evening and welcome to the November 8th, 2017 special meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, some will call this meeting to order. We have one item on the agenda tonight is that, that is the discussion of the 2014 major transportation plan. The city of Murfreesboro is the applicant. We'll be holding a public hearing to solicit public comments pertaining to this proposition. Mr. Whitaker, Mr. Planning Director, I'll turn it over to you.
Chairman, thank you, members of the planning commission. Tonight we have a special called meeting for a public hearing in consideration of our major transportation plan, but first, since I have a captive audience, I'd like to remind everybody about our census that we're conducting. If you, and I hope all city residents get a card in the mail, it will have a ID number. Please fill that card out, put your family member's name on there, send it back in, or you can go to our website and do it online. That really helps us at the end of the year, getting our state shared revenue and really helps to keep our taxes down, so I'd ask everybody to send that in. And, and I'm gonna be taking every opportunity I can to get in front of this camera to ask people to do that, so. We'll move.
I did it yesterday, and it is so easy to do it online. It's like three questions, once you punch your code in, you know, is this your address? The names of the people that live at your house, confirmation that you've typed in the right names, and hit submit, and that's it. And, and it says, "Thank you." So, it's, it's very simple to do, and it accounts for potentially $2.8 million of additional revenue to, for, for the city each year if it's done, so anytime you get the opportunity, bring it up.
I'm playing on it, so you, I'm sure the citizens get tired before March of hearing me say that. Again, tonight, we're, we're having a public hearing for the major tran, or actually, the transportation plan. July, we adopted, and I happen to have a copy, of the Murfreesboro 2035 Plan. 2035 Plan is a comprehensive plan, and it's for the development of our city for the next 20 years. We're about two, three years into it actually by now, but we've adopted all but Chapter Three. And basically, this talks about water, sewer, land use, a 20-year plan on how our city's gonna grow, and how we're gonna develop, and redevelopment of our downtown. One of the parts that we have not, as I said, was Chapter Three. The reason we didn't is because we had to have a land use map, some items in here had to be adopted first, for our consultant could work on the transportation portion, which is trans, uh, Chapter Three. There's actually two parts to that. First part would be transportation, the second would be the mobility part of that. The bill will be coming back later on, but tonight, we're just talking about the transportation portion of it. Mr. Sam Huddleston's gonna give us a brief PowerPoint, after which I'd ask the commission to hold a public hearing. Staff will be available to answer questions before or after that public hearing, and then I'd ask the planning commission to consider it for adoption, if so desired. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Huddleston.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. Sam Huddleston, City Engineering Department. Good evening, Chairman Lamb, members of the planning commission. Take care of a little business before the PowerPoint. As Mr. Whitaker mentioned, this is part of Chapter Three, the mobility chapter. We are here for a public hearing tonight. The notices that went out included some discussion of Chapter Three, but we'll actually just be considering the major transportation plan tonight. Chapter Three of the, which is the mobility chapter, will be coming back before this body to be considered and include a public hearing. And so, I also wanted to let you know about some of the information we left at your desk. You have a copy of chronology of some of the events leading up to tonight's public hearing, starting back with the initial requests for proposals for the 2035 comprehensive plan in December of 2013. So, we're on a, about a four-year journey so far with the comprehensive plan and the 2040 major transportation plan. What we did, what we wanted to let you know with this chronology is that we have reached out to stakeholders, we've held public meetings, we've held neighborhood meetings, and we've advertised this and pushed it out on social media, and so, we'll let you know that, that has received quite a bit of publicity, and, and we've made an effort to inform the public about this plan, and then about our public meeting tonight. I also have included at your desk a cop, a paper copy of the agenda for tonight, along with the package, includes a paper copy of the actual transportation plan map, and then behind that would be specific lists of projects, and we'll refer to this list a little bit later, but it actually lists the projects as short-term, intermediate-term, and then long-term projects, and so, you can actually see the actual projects listed there. So, at this time, we will also wanted to let you know about our team. In addition to the assistance of the planning department, planning staff, you're very familiar with them. Dana Richardson and Greg Judy are here from Neil Schaefer. They've done a lot of the heavy lifting on the consulting side. From the engineering department, Chris Griffiths, the city engineer. Representing our transportation department tonight is the director, Jim Kerr, and assistant transportation director, Ron Balachandra, who appears before this body quite frequently as well. So, we are here tonight for the public hearing, so we just have a few opening slides to introduce the plan and the, and the public hearing tonight. You might ask, why do we need a major transportation plan? Well, these four bullets really a, a, address why our community needs one. We have a saying on the transportation side that we need two things for a road project. One of them is, is funding, and that's covered in the second bullet. The other one is a place to build it, and that's covered in the third bullet. That part, that third bullet, right-of-way needs identification and reservation, a very important tool to this body, to your planning staff and your engineering staff. We, as development plans come before this body and come before staff, we consult the major transportation plan to see if it's impacted by that. We try to bring that to your attention, as well as the developer, but that helps us identify and reserve that right-of-way on those properties that are proposed for development. And so, it's a critical tool. Our development regulations actually compel the developer to follow the requirements of the major transportation plan, as far as right-of-way needs and participation in construction. And then, the fourth thing, and I think this is a pretty neat thing for the, for us as decision-makers and planners for our community, but it serves as a great tool for us to consider in planning facilities, new schools, new parks. It also is a document that's available to the public. If they're looking at, at moving, if they're looking at land purchases, if they're, if they wanna know what's going on in the transportation world, this document's there and helps with community planning as a public resource for them. Where have we been? Some interesting numbers here. We've been tracking since 1997. I won't read this slide to you, but I do wanna point out here in the, in the 21 years that we've been keeping very detailed records, 83 projects. That results in about one being bid every three months. The funding for that has come from all of our partner agencies and private developers. It's resulted in construction of about $350 million worth of projects, and that gets us to projects that are actually built and on the ground today. So, that's where we've been. Looking forward, the mayor and council have been very supportive of our transportation needs. We have 30 projects that we call committed projects, and those are projects that have evolved enough in their life cycle that, that we're very firm, that they'll move forward at some point to be a constructed project. Again, those are about, those include funding sources from city, state, county, and local development sources. That results in about $300 million worth of projected committed construction. And the interesting thing for us here is the community, in both of those slides, we're leveraging about, about 50 cents on the dollar. It's taking about 50 cents of every local dollar we're leveraging for a project dollar, and so, we think that's a pretty good bang for our buck, and we have over the past 20 years or so leveraged that to the tune of about $670 million worth of constructed or committed construction projects. An example of a committed construction project would be something like Thompson Lane, where the state's committed to build that, Brightville Pike, State Route 99 improvements, Cherry Lane, which is a committed project for us, and being managed locally, so that'll give you a sense of, of the types of projects there. Where are we going? Well, it's really time for a new plan. We're, we're operating under a plan that was adopted in 2003. We call it the 2025 Major Thoroughfare Plan. We're really near the, the end of that planning cycle. We're in the last third of that, and so, it's really time for us to revisit that, see how things have changed, see how, how our land use has changed. And then, the, the 2035 Plan was very instrumental in, in laying out the, the projected land uses, which became input into our modeling efforts to do that. And so, we're now looking at, at bringing to you tonight and adopting the 2040 major transportation plan that'll serve our community for the next 25 years for traffic and transportation So, this is our study area. It would include obviously the, the current city limits of the city of Murfreesboro, the urban growth boundary of the city of Murfreesboro, but also includes interactions with our neighbor to the north, town of Smyrna, because obviously, our projects in the future will interact and interconnect with their transportation network, and it also includes some projects within the unincorporated part of Rutherford County, and you see the need for that, then that cooperative teamwork between us and our, our neighbors to the north and south. Three themes are represented in the major transportation plan. The, the six blue arrows indicate the, the first theme, which is to improve connectivity in our community, northeast to southwest and central Murfreesboro. The second major theme that you'll see in the projects is, is reviewing and looking at the corridor capacity, really along the, the I-24 Broad Street corridor. It's a very significant corridor to our community. And then, the third element there is really enhancing network connectivity, and I like to call this really just filling in the gaps and making those obvious and appropriate connections in our roadway network, so that we improve the, the mobility and connectivity here in our community. This is the plan. I know this is, is a very small detail here, but the, the projects are represented on here. What I would like to point out with this slide is, we've made two modifications since the plan was actually published. One of those modifications is here in the Brightville Pike area, where we've included extending that Brightville Pike project out to Joby Jackson Parkway, and then a second minor modification, which is here with Blackman Road at Veterans Parkway out near the proposed West Park, and we've just projected that as a three-lane coming down and intersecting with Veterans Parkway at Shores Road. And so, those two minor modifications have been added to the plan that we'd ask you to consider tonight. And that 2040 Plan includes 30 carryover projects from our 2025 Plan plus 46 new projects, giving us a total of 76 projects we're gonna focus on for the next 25 years. We've divided those into short-term, midterm, and long-term projects, and those specific project lists, again, were in your agenda package, listing those out by short-term, long-term, and midterm. And, and those projects are also represented in the, in the next slide in this pie chart, and you can see there that the funding in those projects result in a projected funding need of about $1 billion over the next 25 years, and that's generally about equally divided between the short, mid, and long-term projects. So, following adoption of the major transportation plan by this body, there's some work we still need to do to get to the goal line, and that's to complete our individual project sheets. That's going to include detailed information about the project that, that we track and keep up with as, as far as the lead agency, the, the characteristics of the roadway, funding sources, funding levels, and those, that type of information. Then, that's rolled into Chapter Three of the mobility chapter. Neil Schaefer and Kendi Keast be responsible for completing the mobility chapter, which will come back before this board, this body to be considered at a public hearing, and then to be adopted and made then a part of the 2035 comprehensive plan, making that document then a complete document, and completing the study that was started about four years ago. So, your project team is here. Neil Schaefer's here, the planning staff's here, transportation engineering staff. We're available to discuss any questions or comments you may have before or after the public meeting. At this time, Chairman, it'd be appropriate to, if you have no questions, to call the public hearing portion tonight, and then we'll certainly listen to the comments tonight and address those at the end.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Huddleston. Before I open the public hearing, does any members of the planning commission have any questions of the staff or the design team? Okay, before I open the public hearing, I'll briefly go over the rules we conduct our public hearings by. Just a few seconds, I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that 'd like to speak either for or against a proposal. We have quite a few people here tonight, so we will observe our three-minute time limit, so please hold your comments to no more than three minutes. If you would, when you come to the microphone, clearly state your name and give your address for the record, and make all your comments to the planning commission. If you do have some questions, the staff will try to make a note of your question. We will not answer them during the public hearing, but we will try to get the staff to address your questions at the conclusion of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb, members of the commission, staff. My name's Joe Swanson, 1188 Park Avenue, and I'm here tonight to represent my family of 29 and a half, 27 of them all live here in Murfreesboro, two are working in our armed services. My story's not unlike many citizens here tonight. At the age of two, my parents moved to Murfreesboro with a Christian supply house that my paternal grandparents started in 1935, and that business is still here today. My brother runs it. When we, when we moved here, there were approximately 25,000 people in the city limits of Murfreesboro. There was no I-24, Church Street was two-lane, Broad Street was concrete, and Highway 96 was a ditch section. Some of us all still remember those times. There was also, if you wanted, if you wanted fast food, right over here on the corner was Burger Chef, if you remember that, Dairy Queen, which has now moved, and we have several of those now, in addition to Roy Rogers, if you remember that one. Without the education and professional leadership and vision of the city, planning and preparing for the growth of Murfreesboro, this city would not be able to perform to its best potential. To do nothing would be catastrophic. Just to give you a perspective of my interest in tonight's meeting, with all these projects, 16 of those projects either touch or within 500 feet of a piece of property that my family owns. That would be roughly half of those projects. We, with roughly 500 people a month moving to Murfreesboro, we need to improve infrastructure just as developers do when they install the infrastructure in the residential and commercial subdivisions. We give people a way to get in and out of the developments that we do, but we look to the city or the government to handle the masses. I would like to respectfully request that the commission vote in favor of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Who would like to be next?
I don't mind getting up early. Randy Caldwell with Reagan Smith, also is a resident that live at 3343 Memorial Boulevard. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of this document. I know from experience, these things are not easy, but it's certainly an important tool that the city needs to have in its toolbox to plan for the future growth of the community. As an engineer and a planner, I know this is important to us as we look at various pieces of property, to address some of the things that Sam said, to make sure that we're planning with anything that we come before you to accommodate that vision and plan for the, the roadways and the right-of-way that is expected as, as part of that. As a citizen, I've always appreciated the proactive approach that the city has taken relative to infrastructure improvements. I can tell you from working all over the state that other cities don't do that, and this document will continue that tradition of looking to the future and planning for the future, which I think is so important, 'cause we, whether we want it or not, we're gonna have growth, and it's, it's gonna continue, and we're blessed to have that as part of our community. So, with that, I just am here to hope that you do adopt this document tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. Nobody else would like to speak?
My name's Dennis O'Neil. I live at 713 Oakwood Circle. I'm not acquainted enough with the whole document to talk about anything except one area of it. The one thing that you're going to do that will impact my neighborhood, River Rock, SR 99 Connector Road, as I understand it, and I've been to a couple of meetings, haven't been able to say much, but been to a couple meetings on this, it appears that the primary purpose of this connector road is for the development of two pieces of property between the Stones River and I-24, some farms that were, are now ready to go. They say they need a secondary road for access for fire department, first responders, things of that nature. I have no problem with that. The problem we have in my neighborhood is the fact that you're planning on bringing it on over to River Rock, which is already heavily traveled, and we're going to be dumping an extra load of people there. Now, if you brought the road across I-24, fine, just don't come across the Stones River, and it won't have any impact on our neighborhood. Right now, it just has negative. We cannot figure out any positive, negative, positive things that can happen with this connector road besides making our neighborhoods less safe. We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil.
My name's Joey P. I'm a resident of the county, not a city resident. I live out on Cripple Creek Road, but I'm also CEO of Murfreesboro Medical Clinic. When, when I saw this plan, and I guess it was a chamber mailing email that linked me to it, it, the, the biggest thing caught my eye was project number one on the short-term improvement list. It's about the fifth one down, and that's the extension of Northfield Boulevard out to Thompson Lane. And, and I guess I've got more, more than anything, questions for the staff or, or the planning commission about, what's the timing of these? Right now, the way I understand it, that property will, or, excuse me, that, that extension of Northfield to Thompson Lane will border the north end of the, the medical clinic property out on Gateway Boulevard, or Garrison Drive right off of Gateway Boulevard. I'm not objecting to it, I'm actually kind of in favor of it, other than as Sam was mentioning a minute ago, future land uses, as we were considering potentially looking at the property north of us for additional expansion capabilities that I don't know that I want patients and staff trying to play Frogger across a, a five-lane road between our two buildings that, that would, that would be there. I, I do applaud the, the city and the, the planning commission at actually looking at, at these things. When, when I look out and see Cripple Creek Road highlighted on a major transportation plan, it's somewhat surprising. It's the last road before you get to the county line headed east out John Bragg. So, I do applaud the, the, the planning commission in the city of Murfreesboro from doing that, but I would like some idea about priorities and how those things are gonna be prioritized, and like that item number one, what's the timeframe for that? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Brian Reel, 912 Central Valley Road. I live on the second dogleg of that, right across from Poochie Walls built the big subdivision where Tilford's Farm was. That's a terrible little curve in there, but my house and my three and a half acres I bought, when I got back from Vietnam, I found three and a half acres in the country, and I was thrilled. And it's right near that dogleg. The other side of me is a five-acre area where Dave Brown is building, it's almost finished, a big beautiful house. Mine's just beginning. But we went to see the planning, the public hearing on that, where you could see the map. It's off Central Valley Road, comes right off the road, then goes straight across a bunch of farmland. The way I see it, it eliminates my three and a half acres, and it's going right between wherever my house is finished and Dave's house is. And I'm hoping that, I know it's a long-term project, but I'm hoping they can make that go a little bit further north toward the river. There's no man's land over there, the city owns it, and there's a walkway and the greenway further on by it, but it would be nice to see if they could go a little further north. I know it's a long plan from now. Hell, I'll be dead by the time they make the damn thing, but.
I don't think so.
I'm hoping it'll be nice to curve around to the north and eliminate anything that may bother us. I know it's long-term, but I'd like to get my words in on it, just in case somebody can draw a curve in that road. Thank you.
Dr. Reel, thank you. You're gonna be around for a long time, no doubt in my mind. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Heather Fagan. I live at 1445 Leanna Swamp Road. I'm right down the street from Dr. Will. I, I'm concerned about that same road. I think this overall plan is great. We moved here just six months ago, and we have fell in love with the city. We've become a part of the community. We've joined the church, we're in the schools. My family and I are very excited to be here, but we're, myself and our neighbors are very concerned with a five-lane highway right outside our door with an anticipated 70 mile an hour speed limit, and especially with the greenway there. We have a lot of foot traffic coming out of the Liberty Station, enjoying the greenway. A lot of us walk over there with our children and our dogs and our families, and we're able to enjoy that now, and we don't know what a five-lane highway will be. Along with that, we have swamp lands over there. I've been in contact with the US Car, Army Corps of Engineers, and they have said that they have been in contact with the state of Tennessee and the town of Murfreesboro. There is a big S curve back there that has a lot of accidents, and many of our neighbors have called about it, and the city had said that because of the swamp lands, they can't expand it, you know, they don't wanna mess with the swamp lands, which is great. So, we've all learned to drive a little bit slower there, and we don't, we have so many swamp lands back there that we would like to really protect them. We have wonderful deer and foxes and everything back there, and, you know, with the flooding just the other day, we noticed how important they were, and once you start messing with that, and all of, you know, that we're really worried what that five-lane will become and ripping up all that. So, we'd like to kinda know, you know, what that five-lane will look like to our properties, our front yards, and for the swamp lands as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Needing count, members of the planning commission, Matt Taylor of SEC. I also reside at 3428 Ravenell Court on the north side of town. Did wanna come and speak in favor of this. Did want to come and speak in favor of this plan. I know you all, as much as anybody here, about the traffic problems in Murfreesboro. I was told very young in my career, there's no problems, there's opportunities, and I think staff and the design team have taken those opportunities, come up with some aggressive and ambitious, some solutions on this plan, and they're to be applauded for that. They were not scared of a challenge, and I look forward to them executing those, these plans in the future and helping the traffic flow as our city grows. So I encourage you to adopt the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Would anybody else care to speak? Last call. Like the auctioneer, I'm getting ready to drop the hammer. Okay. Nobody else would like to speak, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and we're going to turn it over to our faithful staff and let them comment on some of the questions and concerns that were expressed tonight. Mr. Huddleston, would you lead us off?
Sure, sure will, Chairman Lamb. Appreciate the folks who came out and spoke tonight, and I'm going to take the easy ones first, the ones that were in favor, but actually, you know, the, the reason that we have the public hearing and do all the advertising we, we do is to get the public input and public buy-in. This will affect our community. I think one of the speakers said it earlier, to do nothing is, is not an option for us. And we could, we could talk all day about, you know, the current traffic needs and the projected traffic needs, but one of the questions that our consultant answered for us is what is, what does that do-nothing look like? We have exhibits, but to do nothing is, is, is not an option for us, so that means we've got to do something. And so we do know that on some individual projects, there will be some real impacts, and we're certainly aware of that, and we'll be as sensitive as we can be as those projects move ahead, and I'll, I'll think I'll just take, take those, Chairman Lamb, in the order that they were, they came up. Mr. O'Neil talked to us about a connector between River Rock and State Route ninety-nine, and I'm, I'm just going to use the mouse here, and if you'll look on your screen right there, they might not pull it up there, but we're really talking about this connection right here, if you can see the mouse moving back and forth. And so here's, here's what we, we saw, and if you could envision this with me, right now, the, the city has like five, four or five interstate interchanges, and the people that travel from east to west across the interstate to get to our downtown, or get perhaps to the rooftops or destinations on the west side of the interstate, have to go through and intermingle with that interchange traffic. What our traffic modeling tells us is that those interchanges are already pretty heavy with traffic. They're, they're running at, at very, very low levels of service, and so as we project out for the next twenty-five years, those interchanges continue to drag down and degrade the quality of, of transportation and traffic through that area. We, we considered and added to the plan three specific bridges that we're going to call local road options to cross over I twenty-four. One of those is in the Warrior Drive, Riverdale High School area, connecting really with the Rutherford Boulevard side of town. One is the, the project that Mr. O'Neil spoke about, the River Rock to ninety-nine connector, and then we have a third connector that is in the Manson Pike Florence Road area, and it's connecting over into the Asbury Road, Asbury Lane. And those will be bridges over the interstates without interchanges. What that means then is you can move east and west across the interstate without having to interact with people who actually need the interchange. What it does is it takes trips off of the interchange that are local, and then it also keeps our local traffic from having to interact with, with those folks. And so when we met with this group, and we had a neighborhood meeting on, on Monday night, very well-attended, a very lively crowd, but, and they voiced their concerns, and we certainly understand that, but, but my point to them was, Chairman Lamb, this road is really there for your benefit. We're not building it for the commuters who need to get on the interstate. We're, we're really considering it for the rooftops, and so then you have some, some traffic and mobility decisions that you can make. You can choose to use ninety-six, you can choose to use ninety-nine, but you can also choose to use this local road connector to get you into the downtown area, to get you into the backside of the Stones River Mall, to get you into the State Route ninety-nine or the Church Street area without interacting with those busy interchanges. And so we believe the project has merit, we believe it'll be used primarily by those rooftops that are there in that case and lane, River Rock area, and to go back to one of our themes, if we do nothing in this area and leave them with the option of having to go through ninety-six and ninety-nine, those interchanges just continue to bog down with the projected growth. And so we think it's a good project, even though it, it will increase that just a little bit. I think Mr. Richardson had some projected traffic counts from the twenty-forty modeling effort, if he wouldn't mind just come up and, and share a couple of those with us.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Huddleston. Good evening, Chairman Lamb, members of the commission. We did look at this project specifically because we knew that there were some concerns with implementing a project of this nature, but one thing I would ask that you think about when you're considering this project and the others as well, it's not just looking at today and saying, okay, how much is the traffic going to increase? Because if we look out to the year twenty-forty, we're talking about doubling the population of this city. And so regardless of if anything else gets built that are on this list, then we would expect a fairly significant increase anyway in all these roads that are the subject of this public hearing. And just to give you a couple of numbers, and I kind of like to stay away from numbers because they don't always mean the same thing to everybody, but looking at the River Rock project itself, I can find the illustration, yes. And, and this goes back to what I was saying before, based on our base year, which is our twenty-forty, or excuse me, twenty-fourteen accounts, the volume along River Rock had about fifty-two-hundred vehicles a day on an average today. And looking at the twenty-forty, that's looking out into the future with the existing plus committed projects, and that is our existing roadway network, and only the projects that have been committed, and assuming that we build nothing else, then even with the growth that we're talking about, that fifty-two-hundred goes to nearly ten thousand. So there will be increases regardless of whether that's built or not. And of course, as Mr. Huddleston had spoken about, a lot of this is being able to connect the rooftops across I twenty-four and avoid the ninety-six and ninety-nine interchanges and those state arterial routes. But looking at the twenty-forty proposed volumes and stuff on that, really, the, with the connection, that goes from the about ten thousand that we talked about to twelve-thousand-three-hundred. So the difference really isn't the twenty-forty with this road built, it is really the difference between the twenty-forty existing plus committed plan and the twenty-forty plan that actually proposes this project, which would be an increase of about twenty-five-hundred vehicles a day on River Rock. So hopefully that helps kind of put that in perspective, and be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Richardson? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chairman Lamb, the next project that was, was asked about, Mr. P., about the extension of, of Northfield into the Gateway area there in Thompson Lane, Medical Center Parkway, and again, if you'll look at your screen, the mouse here is circulating in that area. I think one of the themes that we talked about in our community, we kept on running into a couple of the same obstacles. One of them was the west fork of the Stones River and its tributaries. The other one was CSX Railroad, and then, and certainly eight-forty and Interstate twenty-four serve as physical geographical boundaries for us. It's real easy for us to build a road through open fields, level ground, but, but those are going to involve major structures, and so as we looked at that Northfield-Broad Street area, and very, all of us are, I think, are very familiar with that, you have two major streets, and, and so you have to make a decision there, left or right on Broad Street, or am I going to turn on Northfield or not? There's not another option for you, and, and so we evaluated the, the benefit of, of adding that connection over the Stones River, separate grade with CSX, and then eventually connecting into Thompson Lane to provide us some connectivity to the activities that are east of Broad Street in the Northfield area with the activities that are in the Gateway area, fountains at the Gateway, the jobs, the medical services that are there, and then our other transportation facilities that are there, Medical Center Parkway and Thompson Lane. And so we, we think it's a very beneficial project, and I'm going to ask Mr. Griffith, our, our city engineer, to come up. He, he worked very hard on, with our team to, to prioritize these projects, and I think he's got some additional information.
Thank you, Sam, Chairman Lamb, and members of the, the planning commission. This is, as Sam mentioned, a much-needed project, a very exciting project for the city. I think it's, it's one that we've, we've looked at for several years, you know, just the, the natural extension of Northfield over the, the Stones River and then on to, to Thompson Lane. Of course, it does have many challenges, the Battle, National Battlefield, TDOT with, with Broad Street, CSX Railroad, whether we want to go over or under it, the Corps of Engineers with the Stones River, but it's a project that we would like to, to really get started on almost immediately if this body adopts the, the plan and then the city council approves it as well. We'd like to get started with the planning study. It's got several questions that still needs to be answered, just one, the, the idea of whether we go over or under the CSX Railroad, and then, and then just to further define the, the route that we'll take with it. It's about a twenty-five million dollar project. To answer Mr. P.'s question, probably if we get started today with those studies and with some of the things we'll overcome, we'll be, we'll be lucky if we're driving down it in ten years, but just because of some of, some of the, some of the obstacles that, that we'll have to, to overcome, not the least of which is the, the funding for it. But it's a, I, I think we'll all agree, it's a, it's a very exciting and much-needed project for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith.
Yes, Chairman Lamb, the, the next item that, that we'd like to talk about was Dr. Reel's comments on the improvements to, to Central Valley, Leanna Road, and I'm going to put, again, put the mouse in, in action here, and actually has a properties, and he pointed those out to us at the neighborhood meeting in this area right here. And so if you'll look on the map, we have a major transportation facility, two-thirty-one north, between Murfreesboro and Lebanon, to, on the east side of that, and then we have an, an interstate interchange, the Sulphur Springs Road interchange at eight-forty. And so what, even with Thompson Lane and Cherry Lane in place, our modeling still predicts the need for a major facility in this area. What we know anecdotally from the neighbors and from our own observations and from the observations of, of Rutherford County, and if you drive in this area, we know people are finding ways to cut through those neighborhoods and cut through those streets today. They're moving from, from perhaps State Route eight-forty into that area and on over to Memorial, perhaps to avoid some of the traffic and some of the congestion that might be in the core of our city. And so the modeling indicates the benefit to our transportation facilities to have this. What I will say is that, that at this point, for this project, it's really just a connection. We're showing the benefit of the connectivity of going from Memorial Boulevard just south of Walter Hill Bridge, Walter Hill Dam, to Interstate eight-forty at Sulphur Springs Road. Obviously, when we get into the design, we're going to look at the location of houses, which, as I understand from Dr. Reel and his neighbor, are fairly recent constructions. Those weren't available to us at the time that we reviewed that, that particular location, but we'll take that in consideration, and again, be as sensitive in the context of where this road goes in, in that particular area. We certainly don't want to cut between two houses with a, with a five-lane road and a, and a hundred-foot right-of-way. And, and so our, my answer to Dr. Reel is that, that this is really a decision we need to reserve for the actual planning and design study here, knowing that the, that the project and our community would benefit from the, from the connection through that area in some fashion. And then the, the last comment that I have is from Ms. Hagan, who talked about the, the existing conditions of Leanna Swamp Road. So sort of a related, issue-related question, but again, on the map, she's on the west side of Liberty Station, Liberty Valley in, in that area, and I think that, that our comments about the traffic is, is already pretty high through there. It's, it's more than, and, and as we project out, will be more than the two-lane Leanna Swamp can handle, and so our response to that is that, that it needs something more to connect, again, Sulphur Springs Road interchange into that neighborhood and then back on over to Memorial. We are aware of numerous wetlands and, and streams in that area, and we'll have to, we'll have to address those in our planning study and then in permitting, but I'll also tell you, and, and many of you are familiar with this, that as, as we often do with many road projects, we also are able to, to solve some other issues. In this case, perhaps poor drainage. While we're not looking to necessarily destroy wetlands and drain the swamp in there, we are looking at, at providing a drainage facility, most likely with the roadway, that would help alleviate some of the water over the road and some of the water up and on the properties and houses in that area. And, and again, I think the community benefits vastly from us including this project on our long-range plan. I'd be glad to, if, if you've got other questions or comments, I'd be glad to address those, or some of the other members of our team would as well.
Okay. Planning commission members have any questions for Mr. Huddleston, or Mr. Richardson, or Mr. Griffith, or any other member of the staff?
I got one.
Sir? Mr. Halliburton?
I got one. So there was a slide that showed the dollar amounts associated with the short-term, intermediate, and long-term, well, specifically long-term, the dollar amounts associated. Is that today's dollars, or is that, is that an inflation, is there an inflation factor to say we won't be building these, the, the ones that are on long-term, we won't be building for ten to twenty years, whatever that timeframe is? Again, is that today's dollars, or is that twenty, fifteen years from now?
Yes, I think I'm going to look at Mr. Richardson and Mr. Griffith and see if they'll confirm for me, but those are present worth dollars.
Okay.
Yes, and so we're, we're using, we're using our historical cost numbers for what it cost us to build a five-lane road, to build a three-lane road, to build a, a, a certain length of bridge, and so we have a good track record of those from, from the six-hundred million dollars worth of projects that we bid and/or estimated to this point, so we use those in today's dollars. As, as we work these projects through the process, we update those dollars in the project detail sheets, and then we also bring those up with the mayor and council. When we review our capital improvement, five-year capital improvement plan, every year, we update and project those dollars to, to current dollars for the time that we're looking to fund the projects, but they are today dollars.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Halliburton? Mr. Wade?
The Blackman Road project in the Braderville Pike, so is that short-term, midterm, long-term?
They would, they would match the, the extensions of the projects there, and I'm going to see if Mr. Richardson has Braderville Pike, the southeasternmost leg of Braderville Pike. I'm not sure where we put that in our, in our funding, or in our priorities, and then, and then also maybe have him to look at Blackman Road, the Blackman Road, Burtonob Road project, and concur that those would follow the same recommendations we have for the other projects.
If you would, give me just a second here, because we do have seventy-six projects, and trying to identify each individual one, sometimes it takes a little time. The Blackman Road is listed as a midterm project, and you were asking about Braderville Pike.
Yes, sir.
Which, which piece? Of course, the existing Braderville...
Pike to Joe B. Jackson.
That, I think it's... Those were the ones that we added, the segments that we added to the plan to be adopted tonight. They're not on this current map and not on the map that we published, but they're two segments that we wanted to add.
Yeah, they were actually extensions of the, the first one that you see that was, I think, from Rutherford Boulevard to Erby. We extended that out to Joe B. Jackson Parkway. We extended that out to Joby Jackson Parkway. And I'm looking down my list here. Yes, that would be as a midterm project number twenty-three on your list that you have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Richardson, anything else, Mr. Wade?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Smotherman?
As we look at this, I, first off, I want to say thank you to everybody who's been involved from the public meetings that we've had out at the schools and stuff who've come by and given your input and explained to us what your concerns were, as well as many of the compliments that have been made as to the efforts that's going into this to try and improve our current traffic conditions. And if there's two calls I get on a regular basis, one of them is, what you're doing is going to impact my property, and I want to know why and how it's going to. And I want you to know why and how it's going to, and they explain to me. The, the, the other comment that I generally get is, is traffic is horrible in Murfreesboro. And, and truthfully, the answer to that, or my reply to that, is I agree with you. When, when you look at the, the majority of our traffic jams in Murfreesboro, it's, it's state roads, though. I mean, it's, it's, it's Memorial Boulevard, it's Highway ninety-nine, it's Highway ninety-six, it's Broad Street, it's Thompson Lane. And, and those are state roads. And, and whether we like it or not, I think there's some funding that's going into place right now that's going to help us with those roadways. And so, so I think, you know, if you're in a community where all you need is maintenance, then it's pretty simple. Where, where my wife grew up, we go back and visit every now and then. If you told me we were meeting by the red light, I, I know exactly where you're talking about. In Murfreesboro, we have almost a hundred and fifty signalized intersections and, and six hundred and fifty miles of roadway. And therefore, I wouldn't have any idea if you told me you would meet me next to the red light. So Murfreesboro is a big city now, we've got a lot of traffic and a lot going on. And it's going to continue to grow. The effort I think that's being made by this project is to, or this plan, is to keep our city as seamless as possible. Because it's, it's never a good thing, I don't think, to say that is happening on the other side of the river or that is happening on the other side of the interstate or that is happening on the other side of the tracks. I think it's important that we keep our city unified and together. And these roadways are an effort, transportation-wise, to do that, to keep our city unified and together and to help address those concerns that we commonly hear about traffic. So the effort that has gone into it is, was tremendous. And I, I think your intentions are good. I think the plan is, is very viable. I'd hate to guess what the long-term numbers would be if we actually knew what they were. Because I mean, instead of three hundred and something million dollars, it's probably a billion dollars in that fourth segment or third segment. But the, it's, it's, it's a good plan. I think it's one that's realistic and, and, and very proactive to try and address the problems that we're currently having. And so I'd say thank you. And, and I guess by my comments, you'll know that I'm probably going to support it.
I'm sure members of the City Council will agree with this. The one thing, after serving here for twenty-six years on this commission, one of the biggest concerns is always traffic and getting around town. And if we don't properly plan ahead, and, you know, that's what we're called the Planning Commission for, and that's why you call it a planning department, is to try to plan on ways to accommodate this traffic and growth throughout Murfreesboro. And it's very hard to do when you have a community as vibrant and as growing as our community is here. And that's, that's good in many ways, and in other ways, it's not so good. You can imagine how it's changed in the almost seventy years I've lived here. The City Council and the Planning Commission tasked with monumental jobs of trying to manage the growth and plan for proper transportation modes throughout Murfreesboro. Some things we've done a decent job on, some things we have not kept up with the, with the growth. And no way to probably keep up with it. But we've got to try, and failure to try would, would result in just catastrophic failure all the way around for the City Council and the Planning Commission. I want to thank specifically Neil Schaefer and, and Mr. Richardson particularly for all the hard work they've done on this plan. They brought up so many things that I wouldn't even dream to have done here. And they, these guys know what they're doing, they're true professionals. The connections and the connectivity of, of the roads and particularly the east-west connections that they talk about here, which we just do not have, but we need desperately to relieve the traffic on some of the other areas or so sorely needed. I want to thank the engineering staff, Mr. Griffin, Mr. Huddleston, and the planning staff to all the work that they've done on this as well. They're all dedicated public servants and do a wonderful job with, for us. I'm a hundred percent behind this plan. Does that mean it's going to be built exactly like you see here in front of you? No, there'll be changes along the way. Some things will be done over the next ten years. And probably this body, the people sitting up here will look at it. The people sitting on the City Council will look at it and will, will tweak it in many ways. They'll delete some things, add some things, and move some things. But that's the purpose of having a long-term plan. Finances, you know, you say we can't afford a billion dollars in, in, in roads coming up. But then again, we can't afford not to plan for these roads in the future. We've got to reserve the right-of-ways for them and have a general idea of where they're going to go. So when we do need them, we can have the place to put them. I want to thank the public, all the people that came to the neighborhood meetings that we had and everybody that came tonight. I appreciate you turning out tonight for this. It's a cool night outside. And I, I appreciate and applaud you for coming in, participating in our process here. All that being said, if there's no other questions or comments by members of the Planning Commission, he said he didn't, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve this plan.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. The motion carries. Mr. Whitaker, do you have anything else, sir? Mr. Ives?
Only comment I have is to help with that billion dollars sending those census cards.
And better news than that, there's, T-Dot is still assuring us within six weeks that the bridge over Broad Street will be completed substantially and that traffic will be driving across-
I guess Santa Claus is going to bring it.
Let, let's look forward to that.
Once again, thank you, folks, for coming. If there's no further business, we stand adjourned.